Well, the light's on.
Now we're being recorded for generations to come.
We hope.
We hope.
Okay, everyone, welcome to the Villarica Planning Commission and zoning. Don't want to forget zoning on this March 5th, blustery windy day here in Villarica. This is a call to order, and do I have a motion for the adoption of this agenda as presented?
So moved, did we adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this agenda. All those in favor raise your right hand. All opposed? All right, next up is old business. Does everybody have a copy of the minutes for February 5th meeting?
Will they be accepted as presented?
We have a motion to accept the minutes of the February 5th meeting as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor raise their right hand. All opposed, raise your left hand. We have vote 4-0 on abstaining. Yes. All right. Next up is new business rezoning.
Good evening, y'all. We have an application RA-08-18 from WGA Ventures LLC. They're at 4751 Best Road, Suite 300, Atlanta, Georgia, for parcel number V050110056 located at 821 Dallas Highway in Land Lot 193 of the 6th District in Carroll County. The parcel is 0.46 plus or minus acres. The current land use is general commercial. Future land use designates it as medical character area. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from general commercial to office institutional for professional office. In doing the staff analysis, it appears that the existing general commercial zoning designation is not an error. The zoning designation to the future land use map, subject property is currently located within city limits and future land use map designations in the surrounding area are commercial, public institutional, medical character area. Is there a community need for and benefit from the proposed zoning? Rezoning the property to office institutional would complement the existing institutional medical uses in the vicinity. Tanner Medical Facilities are in very close proximity as well as other medical offices in the medical support overlay district. Whether the proposed change is consistent with the character of the area in which the proposed zoning is proposed? Pro-zoning is consistent with the character of the area, especially with its proximity to medical support overlay district. Rezoning this parcel to office institutional will be consistent with surrounding land uses. Whether the proposed zoning is compatible with the zoning and uses of the property nearby? Proposed zoning is compatible with nearby zoning and uses Tanner Medical Center as well as other small medical offices can be found along nearby Dallas Highway and Walnut Drive. Whether the existing zoning is suitable for the development, the use is authorized under the existing zoning classification will be conducive to proper community planning and a logical extension of existing urban area for growth center. The existing zoning GC is suitable for commercial uses in the area. However, because the parcel is in close proximity to Dallas Highway and other medical institutional uses, it is a logical extension of the existing urban area and O&amp;I zoning is as well. Whether the public and community facilities, water, sewer, electrical service, police and fire are in place. Subject property is currently provided with community facilities, including public sewer and gas. These services should remain available and seem to be adequate to serve uses authorized under the proposed zoning. Whether the authorized uses will not adversely affect the capacity or safety of the street network in the vicinity of the property. Remember, this 0.46 parcel is to be combined with a 9. plus or minus 3 acres that are immediately adjacent to the south of this as part of the development parcel. Proposed rezoning should not have significant impact on the capacity of the road. Property fronts along Dallas Highway will become part of the larger adjacent tract if it develops. Any potential environmental impacts? Based on the cities and counties available maps, no streams or rivers are located in the site. Therefore, staff is of the opinion that there are currently no potential environmental impacts. Staff comments. Applicants requesting subject property be zoned general commercial to office institutional for the proposed use of a professional office should have relatively low impact on surrounding residential community in comparison to other retail and service uses permitted in O&amp;I. Staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. The permitted use is limited to business, medical, dental, and professional offices. Two, all improvements to be installed on property prior to occupancy. And three, ingress and egress shall be permitted only from Dallas Highway. As required by Article 2, Section 2.01 in the code, City of Villarica, the public has been notified in the Times, Georgia on February 14th, 2019, and signs have been posted on the property. And we've only had one set of comments from the surrounding property owner. We received those today, and I think you have a copy of that in your packet. With that being said, the applicant's representative is here, and will be glad to speak on behalf of the application.
Any questions for staff?
This has been a very confusing presentation from... You know, it's not intuitively obvious that this .46 acres is to be merged in with the 9.6. And at one time it said that recommended egress was to be from Old Stone Road.
John, that was my typo.
Okay, okay. Because no way is this close to Old Stone Road.
When you've got four applications, four parcels that are pretty much clustered together, being short-staffed, you recycle them. And that part of the recycle, the one that Tracy gave you tonight in your packet has been corrected.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
I do have a small question. Here, the applicant name, WCGA, has a double asterisk at the end of it. And at the bottom of the page, it's got the double asterisk and says, "With the consent and approval of Tanner Medical Center, present holder of fee simple title to the captioned property." So what does that mean? Is it saying that Tanner is acquiescing to this application?
Mr. Flowers?
Yes, sir.
The applicant's attorney is here to represent the applicant. I'm sure he can answer that question like pronto.
Okay, well, then let's have him.
All right. If the applicant or representative of the applicant would step forward, give us your name and address, and tell us why we should consider this rezoning.
Mr. Craft, yes, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Sam Price. I'm an attorney in Carrollton, Georgia. Had an office here in Villarica, actually, for about eight years. What we're talking, what we're asking here to do is to rezone simply approximately one-half acre of this property. It will go into a parcel which will be approximately 9.64 acres. This is next to Tanner Medical Facility at the present time and next to and behind your library. The only reason we're asking for this and the reason why it's set out is WGA Ventures as the petitioner with the consent of Tanner Medical Center. Tanner Medical Center owns the property at the present time. We simply have a contract with Tanner Medical Center. We're in our due diligence period at the present time, looking as to whether or not that contract's going to close. Tanner, there should be attached to the petition a consent signed by Lloyd Howard of Tanner Medical Center consenting to the application itself. And I believe Gary Thomas represents Tanner Medical Center, and they consent and agree to ask for this rezoning. The only reason we are asking for that, the majority of the property is presently zoned O&amp;I. The one-half acre which is commercial would need to be rezoned to the O&amp;I for us to proceed with the purchase of the property and the proposed plans for development.
It states that the planned use is for a telephone call center? Is this for Tanner or a private operation?
It's a private operation, yes, sir. And I believe that the CEO of the company of WGA Ventures made a presentation, which was on the headlines of the paper about two weeks ago, setting out the proposed year. It will be an emergency ambulance call center section, and we're talking about moving the business to Villarica as its home office.
I did not realize...
If it is moved, it would employ approximately, or hope to, up to 200 people.
Did not realize that that presentation was related to this.
Yes, sir. That's what we're talking about here.
All right, so they're not going to be, though, they're not going to station ambulances or other medical equipment here? This is just going to be a...
I did not anticipate that. This is primarily a call center, and the call center actually would be, they have services that they supply as far north as Washington DC and Dallas, Texas. So it would be a primary center for all operations.
Right, but not coming and going with ambulances and things of that nature?
It should not be an active ambulance location.
Okay, so they're talking about people on headsets, and they can be talking anywhere.
And this is O&amp;I, and this is what we're talking about.
Okay.
Wow.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir. At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this proposal? All right, no takers. Is there anyone opposed to this? Please step forward. Okay. And again, if you can give us your name and address and...
Tanya Gentry, and I am at, my address is 115 Old Stone Road, but my dad owns property. And I emailed earlier today, I believe y'all have the email, of our points of view on Tanner keeps expanding, and it's causing a lot of issues because my dad's house is right there in front of the library. And if they keep coming further down, we would just like for them to, you know, put a privacy fence around his house. So, did you read over our points?
Yes.
That's what we are opposed to, you know. The traffic that keeps coming through, people are walking through his yard, you know. We have people coming over and complaining from Willowbrook, and so that's what we're opposed to. More traffic, more people in the yard, and things like that. We would like for Tanner, if they're going to continue to grow, to place something in place around his house to protect his privacy.
And Bobby, are we going to address that? Okay. We talked about this prior, so he has something for you.
As long as the properties fronting Dallas Highway are zoned residential, then the code requires any O&amp;I commercial zoning to provide a buffer or fence, being landscape, privacy fence, et cetera, around to protect it against the residential property.
So they would get their fence if...
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Anyone else? All right, at this point, the public section is closed. Any other further questions, or do I have a recommendation?
One question of Mr. Elliott. The recommendation, one of the conditions, is that all improvements be installed prior to occupancy. What kind of improvements would be required?
Mr. Hannaback, that just states that the project is to be completed, fully inspected, and a certificate of occupancy issued prior to occupancy, and that's the normal procedure.
So nothing specific, okay.
Anyone else? All right, do I have a recommendation?
I recommend to approve with conditions.
And the conditions?
That they have listed by the staff as well, and the other is part of the law that they're going to have to do if...
Okay. All right, we have a motion to approve this with the conditions that are stated or written down. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor raise your right hand. All opposed. Motion carries. This has been approved. Council meeting is next Tuesday. So y'all would need to go to the council because they have the final say-so. And it starts at, what, 6 o'clock? 6 o'clock next Tuesday. Thank you, y'all.
Mr. Chairman, the next case is RA-01-19. It's an application by Tanical Medical Center Incorporated, 705 Dixie Street, Carrollton, Georgia, 30117, for a parcel, the parcel number is V050110039 located at 215 Old Stone Road in Land Lot 192 of the 6th District in Carroll County. Parcel size is 9.56 plus or minus acres. Current land use is rural development, RD. Future land use calls for medical character area. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property from RD to office institutional for a medical facility, a future medical facility. We go through the same matrix that we did on the previous case. The current zoning, according to our records, is correct. It is RD. Is this zoning change consistent with our future land use map? O&amp;I is consistent with the medical service character area. Is there a community need and benefit for the proposed zoning? Rezoning the property to office institutional would complement the existing institutional medical facilities in the vicinity. Is the change consistent with the character of the area in which proposed zoning is proposed? Pro-zoning is consistent with the character area, especially with its proximity to medical support overlay district, which is currently Tanner Medical. Future land use designation for this parcel is medical uses character area, which is directly compatible with the proposed application. Is the application consistent with the, or compatible with the zoning and uses of property nearby? It is compatible with nearby zoning and uses Tanner Medical Center as well as other small medical offices can be found along nearby Dallas Highway and Walnut Drive.
Let me just interject a quick question. Related to that point, compatible with the zoning and uses, isn't the, in that area where this is located, in the approved land use plan, isn't it designated already as professional medical office, that kind of a facility?
Medical character area, that is correct.
Yes, so it's exactly in keeping with the land plan?
Mm-hmm. Skipping down, I won't bore y'all with all these. There are no potential environmental impacts. There are no streams or rivers located on the property. Staff comments, applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from RD to office institutional. Proposed use for medical office should be a relatively low impact on the surrounding residential community in comparison to other retail and service uses provided in O&amp;I. Additionally, the applicant has requested that, they would also like to request that the city council provide a permanent waiver of lapse of rezoning provision found in Section 2.03B6 of the Unified Development Code. Tanner requests that if the city council approves Tanner's rezoning application, city council permanently waive the time period required under Section 2.03B6 of the Unified Development Code for Tanner to establish the proposed use or initiate development before the failure of which would constitute consent for the city to initiate the process to revert the zoning back to RD. That is a requirement in our UDC. That being said, staff recommends approval of this application with the following conditions. Permitted use is limited to medical, dental, and professional offices. Again, Mr. Hannaback, all improvements to be installed on the property prior to occupancy. And number three, a permanent waiver on the lapse of zoning be approved. As required by Article 2, Section 2.01, this application has been duly authorized or advertised and posted.
I have a question. Since the RA-01-02-03, it's the same applicant, same applications, are all of the recommendations and conditions the same?
Yes.
They are the same?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
If the request for the lapse in rezoning is defined by UDC now, why is this necessary?
Well, the UDC states that once the zoning's been approved, you have one year to build your project or start your project. If you don't, the zoning can revert back.
Okay.
And, you know, Tanner's, they got a lot going on, and they may not be able to get this built or started in a year.
Gary, I'm not speaking for you, but...
You know, that's why they're asking for it, because it may take some time.
Now, this is a property next to the library, right?
It's south, just a little bit east. This immediately joins the existing 9.64 acre tract that came up in the last application. It's a direct, boundary lines are contiguous.
Okay. Again, I wish there was something could be done with these maps that we're presented with, because you can make no sense of those.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Mr. John. We've, and I'm going to introduce, I know our folks are here, but I'll introduce Ron Johnson, my new planning and zoning specialist, in a little bit. But we've talked a little bit today about, we may have discovered a way to provide a better map. We'll see how it goes for next time.
Very good.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Okay. At this time, would the applicant please step forward, give us your name and address? Tell us why we should consider these applications. And what I was going to say is, because it's all the same, can we have him address it as all three? And then only if there's a objection to one, then we can go back and address it as far as discussion so that he doesn't have to come up and do 0219, 0319, and basically say the same thing?
I think that makes sense, as long as we let everybody know here at public hearing that's what we're doing, and that's what we've done. So I think that makes sense.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move we consider all three of these requests.
Bobby wanted to say something.
We can do that. Just save on that, yeah. That way we're...
Have you got anything to change, actually, from what you already?
It's just the parcels are different.
Yeah. I move that we consider all three together.
Okay.
And since they are so similar and contiguous.
Let me at least announce...
Go ahead and announce, yeah.
The parcel specifics.
Okay. Well, I just, okay.
RA-02 is the next case on our agenda. It's an application, again, by Tanner Medical Center in Carrollton, Georgia. It's parcel number V050110043. Location is 217 Old Stone Road in Land Lot 192 of the 6th District in Carroll County. The parcel size is 0.99 plus or minus acres. It's currently, land use is single-family residential. Future land use is, here again, medical character area. Applicants requesting to rezone the property at 217 Old Stone Road from single-family residential, which is R20, to office institutional for future hospital and medical facilities. And RA-03-19, Tanner Medical Center, again, Carrollton, Georgia. Parcel number V050110031. Property is located at 229 Old Stone Road in Land Lot 192 of the 6th District in Carroll County. Parcel size is 0.92 acres. Current land use is single-family residential, R20. Future land use, here again, is medical character area. Applicants requesting to rezone this property from R20 or single-family residential to office institutional, again, for hospital or medical facilities.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now with the representative of the applicant, please step forward, give us your name and address, and why we should consider these three rezonings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. My name's Gary Thomas. I live at 405 East Johnson Street in Temple. I'm here representing the applicant, Tanner Medical Center Incorporated, 705 Dixie Street in Carrollton, Georgia. Essentially, we are requesting the rezoning for these three parcels. It is contiguous with the parcel that you just discussed earlier, which was O&amp;I. All of the other area of property that Tanner owns in the area has been rezoned for medical facilities. It falls within the recommendation for your future land use planning map to be medical facilities. And approximately, probably about a month, a month and a half ago, Mr. Howard made an announcement that Tanner Health System was in the process of planning for assisted living and memory care facilities in the Villarica and Carrollton area. And memory care is one of the considerations for this, these three particular parcels. And that's what we're looking at right now. That is also the reason for the request to, for the waiver, because we are in the early planning stages, but felt that it was appropriate due to the rezoning of the other piece of property you discussed earlier to bring all of these at the same time.
I guess my question isn't, and you partly explained it, however, it's a bit problematic to just give a permanent waiver to feel like you want to build whenever you feel like building, because it could just not be, might not be well for the city at that time. Is it not possible that it would happen, begin within the next year?
At this point, we're still in the planning stages. We've got to determine the exact size of that building and the footprint of that building, and then do the testing on that particular property to see if that property provides the correct environmental impact and those type things for us, and we're just not to that point yet. And so that's the reason for the waiver. Generally, that will take us more than a year to do that.
So if you had two years, that would be enough for you to start your construction in order to make sure? I just, permanent is a big word when you're dealing with the city and...
I understand that, and I think the, I think one of the reasons we decided to ask for that is because it was indicated in your future land use.
Absolutely.
In the application, it says hospital and medical facilities. That's our intention, is some type of medical facility. If it's, if it doesn't work for memory care, then there might be other uses, such as a medical office building, that we would do there.
Right, and just the concern would be different, different medical facilities require different, put different burdens on the area. So, you know, whereas one thing, a memory care would be a specific type with certain type of traffic and certain type of visitation, an office would be something different, daily, different, you know. So it's just, and that's a very busy area, and of course, we love Tanner, and we're very happy with all the development there, but we do have to worry about the residents and how it impacts everybody.
I understand that, and I would say to that end, whatever we decide at that point has to go through the planning review process and the review process with the city. And that is generally when those requirements are extended out as far as the actual development. It's what we have to do to help with traffic, to help with anything that is required for the neighboring property and that kind of thing, based on that use at that time. Also, if we decide to build something that doesn't fall within O&amp;I, even though we have a permanent waiver, it would have to come back for rezoning at that time if it didn't fall into that classification.
Agreed. That seems redundant to do that, but yes, agreed, okay.
Commissioner, to the back, if I could just add just a little bit more meat on the bones in terms of our options legally under the code. The minimum, the floor is that, is that the applicant has within one year to establish a... the floor is that, is that the applicant has within one year to establish the proposed use or initiate development, but the, that section also gives a second option, which is the, the city council can establish a time period beyond one year. So, if they want to give two years, three years, theoretically, you could give 10 years if you wanted to, there's no limit on it.
Right.
Although I anticipate it has to be reasonable. But the city council could do that, and theoretically, the Planning and Zoning Commission could make a recommendation tonight as to the recommended time period in lieu of the different contingencies that we're, that Tanner has to deal with and, and consider.
Also, with the, with this zoning classification that's been requested, I don't think they can go in and like put in a car wash.
This is medical, no, but...
You know, I mean, so it's like, they're pretty restricted on what they can do whenever they get to it. Given though the, I am taking part of it on faith, but given the situation with demand for medical services, I have a feeling too long before they'll start putting something on that parcel.
I just don't think the precedent should be set where we just do forever.
I agree. I agree with that, I agree.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just pleased with the presentation of what your plans are, because again, that was not stated in the material. And I see a very, excuse me, significant need for that, so, thank you very much.
We do too.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, at this point, would anyone else like to speak in favor of this? No takers, anyone against? Sure. Just give us your name and address and all the rest.
My name is Steve Woodall, and I live at 686 Punkin Town, but I back up to the nine acres that we're talking about, and there is a creek on this property. It comes off their property onto our property, and I'm not sure if, if there's environmental impact on this creek that's been studied, but the, the other question I have is, do we have any kind of preparation or planning for the traffic jam that's going to be coming down Old Stone Road? Because there's also, I think there's about 50 acres across the street that the Broome property owned, and I don't know who owns that now, but I'm just wondering if, if, if there is any kind of preparation that's being done for the future traffic issues that, that are going to occur because of all this. But there is a creek on that property, and it does, it runs from that property onto our property.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak against? Okay. That's somebody over.
One.
Yes, give us...
This is my parents, I've been in a soccer, sixth grade soccer games. Little wind long.
Okay, everybody, no pictures. Go ahead.
Right. I live at 686 Punkin Town Road, my name's Phyllis Woodall. I live with that guy. We have been there for 35 years on that same piece of property. We, our house did face Old Stone Road, we lived there for, I don't know, 10 years, maybe 15 years. And then we built on that same piece of property, now we face Punkin Town instead of facing Old, Old Stone Road. But our property goes onto Old Stone Road. That, that road can't take any more traffic. I mean, it's just a narrow, two-lane little road. And in the afternoon, when the Atlanta people start coming in, they avoid the three-way stop and they take Old Stone Road. So, it has quite a lot of traffic in the afternoon. And if you're throwing this wide open forever, and they start building office buildings with multiple different doctors in them, the traffic's going to be unreal. I mean, it will run us out of our home. We've been there for 35 years. I don't think it's fair, that road has never been industrial, it's always been residential. And I understand they bought the property and they're going to improve it, and that's good, and I'm for growth, but you can't just throw that open, because if they have multiple medical offices there, there's no end to how many cars will be on that. Ride down Old Stone Road one day and see what that road looks like. It's, it's not nearly as good as Punkin Town, but a lot of people take it in the afternoon. Well, during the day. But I think there needs to be some limit on the zoning, because I don't know what they changed our zoning to, but we were agricultural. We've got 35 acres there. We were agricultural. And now, we're all of a sudden industrial medical, right up to our landline. And the creek has a lot of wildlife. Last night, we were listening to the owls, and they're right there on that creek. Did you know that? Have you heard them? And it's about the only little space with a creek left around there since, you know, Mirror Lake used to be zoned different.
Believe me, there's still plenty of them in Mirror Lake.
Owls?
And deer, and coyotes, and foxes.
Well, I've seen any coyotes.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Well, there's one that wanders through on occasion, so...
Yeah, I've seen the deer, and we got lots of deer, but sometimes people are great enough to come hunting over there. We lose some of our deer. Thank you, but just consider the situation that we're in. When we were there, when there were no utilities on Punkin Town, we had to pull our utilities off of Old Stone Road to even have electricity to our house. And I know life moves on and we have to change, and I understand that, and Villareca's growing, and it's going to grow, but, but I don't think you should run your old citizens out that have been here their entire life, you know? I think there should be some limitation on Tanner, on what they can build on Old Stone Road. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, anyone else? Okay, at this point, we're going to close the public comments. Any other questions for staff?
Well, that is a serious issue with Old Stone Road and Punkin Town Road and even Dallas Highway through there. Traffic is, is bad. And in fact, turning from Old Stone Road onto Dallas Highway, if you're not careful, if there's a fall off there, that if a car goes over that edge, it's going to be hung up. So, there's a lot of work that needs to be done with, with those roads, no question about it. I didn't, I don't, again, I appreciate the recommendation that the access from this one property be from Dallas Highway, whereas at one time, it did say Old Stone Road, so that helps a little bit. Plus, I think a lot of the development that's taken place along there is not so much for the hospital, but it's office, medical, dental offices, and they don't require quite as much traffic as, as otherwise. But it's a valid concern and one that the city needs to take into consideration.
Any other questions? Do I have a recommendation?
I'm of approval of the rezoning as presented with the combination of the three units.
Okay, we have a motion to approve RA-0119, 0219, and 0319 as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, all three, all, all those in favor raise your right hand. All those opposed? Motion carries four to one. Okay. And again, next Tuesday, 6 o'clock is the city council meeting, they are the final say so. Oh, oh, you want to say so? On this, on the, on the, oh, okay, oh, no, 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 I'll give you, I'll give you a spot. Okay, but anyways, it's next Tuesday, 6 o'clock, get to do this all over again, and the city council is the final say on whether this gets approved or not. You're up.
I just want to introduce Ron Johnson, he's our new planning and zoning specialist.
Okay.
He will be your designee moving forward.
So, we're expecting some very entertaining presentations here and...
Well, we're tickled to death to have them.
We like it with audio.
No pressure, Ron.
Try to solve that nap problem. Bobby talked to me about it earlier.
We like audio with our presentations too, but we'll, we'll get with you.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome aboard. We are VR, remember that, that'll get you far. Yes, that'll get you far. Does he get a hat?
He's got a hat.
Yeah, Villareca hat. You get him a hat, okay. Welcome aboard. All right, next up is staff comments. Bobby Elliott, you're good?
That was yours.
That was yours.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, next up is public comments, otherwise known as open mic night here at the Planning and Zoning Board. You have up to 10 minutes to say whatever you'd like, so if anyone would like to say anything, come on up and have at it. All right, everybody tired, it's cold, nobody wants to take it, okay?
I have a question of, I guess of staff. Nancy Bims has presented to us at the last meeting her plans for a meeting on Thursday, and there seems to be a great deal of confusion. Where is that meeting going to be held?
Thursday's meeting is actually going to be held at City Hall.
At City Hall, not here at the courthouse?
Not at the courthouse.
And not at the library?
Nope. Not at the library.
Is that on the webpage or anything like that?
Yes, it is on the website.
Hmm, okay.
All right, thank you. All right, well, no takers for public comments at this point. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Uh, move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor raise your right hand. All that want to stay?
Nope.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you all for coming.
Bobby, thanks for this.
It's thank you, Eric.
It's, it's that...